Currently, we have, I guess we can all introduce ourselves. I'm Shane Blazer, the Chairperson of Plan Commission.
Ben Goodrow, a member of the Planning Commission.
Eric Davin, a member.
Lee Tal, a member.
Susan Fee, a member.
All right, thank you. Our first item on the agenda is approval of the report from July 7, 2021, Plan Commission meeting.
I can make a motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Eric? And a second to approve the previous report. All in favor, say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Item two is Plan 21-0648, Calvary Baptist Church. Request for a certified survey map. Approval to create two lots and dedicate Right-of-Way at 469 Airport Avenue, parcel ID 3412873. Kyle?
Thank you. So, the next two items, I'll speak to both of them if that's fine, as they were both included in the staff memo. They both typically don't require, well, I'm sorry. The first one does require Plan Commission approval because it is a new lot. The other one only requires approval because it requires the dedication of Right-of-Way. Ultimately, though, both requests require a dedication of Right-of-Way. Again, the first being at Calvary Baptist Church, they're looking to separate the home on the property. It does meet the R2 zoning district standards for a single lot at 7,500 square feet and 75 feet of lineal frontage. And therefore, staff would recommend approval, including the dedication of property. I believe it is three feet that is being dedicated for Airport Avenue. The second one is a lot combination under the same ownership. Typically, lot combinations under the same ownership do not require Plan Commission action. However, in this case, there's a dedication of Right-of-Way as well. I believe it's 10 feet of Right-of-Way to be dedicated along Baker Street in this case. So again, it's to approve the CSM with the dedication of that Right-of-Way for the second request. That's all I have.
Thank you. So regarding the first item, Calvary Baptist Church, what are, any discussion? Or what are your wishes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve that request. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? And then I'll read the next item, which is Plan 21-0608, Goodness Property. Request for a certified survey map. Approval to combine two lots, which includes the dedication of Right-of-Way at 549th Street North, parcel ID 3407153. Plan Commission, any discussion or questions or what are your, yes?
I have a question. With regards to Right-of-Way that was up for dedication, what's the difference between the, is there a way to apply?
So, the city's official street map identifies what the proposed or future Right-of-Way should be for a road. In this case, because Baker's used as a primary thoroughfare, they just identify an 80-foot, I believe it's 80 feet, of Right-of-Way for the entire corridor. So, one of the ways in which, over time, the city can achieve that Right-of-Way is when individual properties pursue certified survey maps, we can require the dedication of that Right-of-Way, rather than having to use eminent domain if we're to do a major reconstruct project.
Yeah? Any further discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve Plan 21-0608, as outlined.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve that item. Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? That motion carries. On to item four, Plan 19-0938, Community Development. Action on a request to replace chapter 46, sign code of the municipal, of the city's municipal code with the signed code, or with the new sign code. Kyle?
So I'm handing out just another copy of the sign table, just a larger version, which is, I believe, the last page in the packet. It's a little bit more legible at 11 by 17 size than the small packet size. Nothing has changed on the sign table on the handout. Again, it's just so that if it's referenced, we can understand it and interpret it easier. With regards to this item, again, there's a lot of history here in terms of this sign code being started back in 2019. If you can remember, we had a preliminary action on the item early in 2020. That was then postponed, and we acted the last two months to postpone as well. We had a public hearing last month. Some of the concerning items were a few things regarding grammar and consistency in terms of like what the wall graphic would be, whether it was perforated graphics, if they would be included or not. There were some other clarifications, and those changes were made and clarified throughout the new version that you have in front of you. Also of concern was the ability to include either a sign variance or a sign exception process. With regards to the feedback that was obtained last month, both by the Commission and some members of the public, staff elected to include a sign exception process rather than a variance process. Because the sign code does not sit within the zoning ordinance, I don't believe a sign variance is appropriate for, for the sign code. However, I think a sign exception process is appropriate in the event that somebody is, has a unique circumstance on their property. The one I used last month was if you have a grade increase on like a ramp for a bridge, and you've got a property adjacent to that ramp. Now, if they can only have a 20-foot-high sign, they could argue that their sign isn't as visible, and they could pursue the sign exception process to make up for that unique circumstance. So rather than taking the grade of their property, could we, you know, approve the grade of the ramp where they have the frontage? And then from that point, they could have a sign a little bit taller to account for that unique property circumstance. So that sign exception process was included. It's outlined in blue in, I believe it's at the end, the end of the packet. And it does identify some of those unique circumstances, just so it's not a blanket type of exception process. There are some review criteria that need to be met. And, you know, I'd entertain for any comment on that. The other thing I want to dive into, and perhaps I'll wait to do so until we discuss the sign exception process, but that is the electronic message center sign. There was concern previously by the Commission, as well as by members of the public, regarding those regulations. And I have pursued some additional research, much of which was put in a memo in the packet. And I do have that information summarized in the presentation that I can go over as well. But before I do, do we want to address any questions regarding other portions of the sign or the sign exception process?
Just like how it would work, maybe if somebody applies for a sign, and then your department shows that it doesn't meet the sign, then they can just apply it to present it in front of this Commission? Is that how it would work?
Yeah, we would treat this very similar to a sign variance in that if it's very clear-cut, and we as staff or other zoning administrators designate things that there is a unique circumstance that would warrant action by the Plan Commission to grant an exception. You know, we could direct that applicant to pursue that avenue. Now, I think at the end of the day, even if staff said, you know, you've got to meet this square footage requirement for a sign, and somebody said, nope, I want to pursue the sign variance, I don't think anything would stop them from doing that. If it is approved, we will draft an application in, you know, that outlines the requirements for the sign exception. We would also amend the fee schedule to include an application fee for the sign exception process. And we'd have to determine what, what fee would make up, you know, staff time and would be appropriate for that process. But, you know, at the end of the day, if this is approved with the sign exception process, essentially, anyone could apply, even if staff isn't supportive of the request. And then it would come to this body. Staff would make a recommendation like we've done on many other actionable items. And then it would be up to the Plan Commission as to whether or not they would approve the sign exception.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
I have a question, I guess. Kyle, how do you, do you think that this will be often used?
I think it'll be used minimally, because again, I'm, I'm going to treat it like a zoning variance. So I've been with the city for about a year and a half, and we've gone to the Zoning Board of Appeals once for a zoning variance. I think part of the reason is because of, you know, there's a clear set of standards, and there's a set of standards under the sign exception as well. And if I don't strongly believe that the individual has a chance, you know, for the approval or to be granted the zoning variance, I typically, while I recommend it, I typically, you know, indicate that they may be wasting their time or that they may be covering a fee that's non-refundable. And most people acknowledge that and obviously don't want to pursue something that is going to be, you know, pointless anyways if it is denied. But again, I always remind the individuals that if they would still like to pursue the process, they have that right under the code, and I will gladly help them and walk them through the process. So I don't think it will unless the Plan Commission starts setting a precedent. If somebody comes in and they don't meet the requirements outlined for the sign exception, and the Plan Commission grants the exception, now you've set a precedent. And I will say that sign contractors, they work in many municipalities and with many individuals. And once they recognize that precedence, if they can get their client the bigger sign or the taller sign, they'll go through the same process. And I think it would be difficult to deny anything then moving forward if the precedence is set. So while I don't have a vote for any sign exception, you know, I would certainly make recommendations to staff, you know, to hopefully act according to the standards of review.
Any other questions? So did you have a presentation, Kyle?
So if, yeah, if nobody has any other questions regarding the sign exception process, I can jump right into the electronic message center information, if you'd like. Otherwise, Mayor, I don't know, are there others on the call? I know we don't have a public hearing scheduled, but certainly I know JR, I think, was planning to at least call in or, or speak.
Tyler, there's nobody on, is there? Okay.
That would be beneficial, so we could at least have their name and address for the record.
Could you identify yourself who's on the phone?
Otherwise, Mayor, I don't know, are there others on?
Hello, this is JR Seaworth.
Hi, JR. And who else is on the phone? Just JR? Okay. Thank you. We're just gonna begin talking about the electronic message boards.
Okay, all right. Go ahead. I'm also watching on the live YouTube. So that's why I'll just leave my phone muted unless I need to speak.
Sounds good. Oh, okay. Go ahead, Kyle.
Thank you. And I'm not sure if, is JR gonna be able to catch the presentation?
He's watching it on YouTube.
Okay. Everything that I'm describing in the presentation was included in the memo that's in the packet. I just wanted to summarize and walk through it. Staff basically looked at three things within the packet. The first being surrounding municipality examples. So there are, there are several communities that do not regulate electronic message centers. They either group them as freestanding signs or wall signs and don't specifically identify them as EMCs. Or they will just identify them as a changeable copy sign. And I think changeable copy being the old sign that's been around for a while where, you know, it's got magnets, and you, you use a pole to stick it up on the sign. And, you know, I think part of the reason why some communities don't identify EMCs is because the code is so old. You know, they might have a code that's from the 90s or prior, or the 2000s, where electronic message centers have not been very popular yet. Or there could be, you know, some communities that just have chosen not to regulate them at all, thinking that perhaps they somewhat regulate themselves, as I stated, and/or group them into a wall sign and the definition of wall or freestanding sign. Nonetheless, there are several communities that do regulate them. And I have provided a summary within the packet, which is matching what's being presented on the PowerPoint presentation. One of which is Marshfield, which requires a maximum of one EMC per property, a maximum size of 40 square feet. The display is four seconds in terms of being the maximum or the minimum hold time on a single screen. And then they can only display messages and non-text images. Scrolling of text is not applicable. And so they also require a transition, the time between when one slide transitions to the next slide at a, at one second or less. They also, all three, as you can see in the last column, do require auto-adjusting photosensitive, you know, dimming controls on the sign. And all three have a 0.3-foot candles of brightness that the sign cannot exceed, which is measured at different distances dependent on the size of the sign. And we'll get into that a little bit later. There's a reason I think all three of them have the 0.3-foot candles requirement and use a very similar equation to determine the, the distance at which the sign is measured. Moving on, you'll see Wausau is very similar. The primary difference is that they allow instantaneous transition from slide to slide, but they have a much longer minimum requirement for the static display at 10 seconds per display. And they also, they only allow EMCs for monuments, order boards, and institutional-type signs. And those signs vary between eight to 10 feet in height. They also regulate the amount of area that an EMC can take up. So rather than having just an EMC sign, it has to be 50% of the total sign. So if you have the name and logo as static copy, a traditional sign, then underneath you can have up to 50% be an EMC sign. Moving on to Green Bay, they require all EMCs to go through the conditional use permit process. And they need to be also part of the primary business sign. They cannot exceed 32 square feet in size. They have a static requirement of eight seconds, and animation is prohibited on their signs. They also limit the transition period of one second or less. So as you can see, a lot of similarities in terms of what's regulated, but certainly there are differences in, I think, display, transition, size, and number or use of the EMC. One thing I'll note upfront is that we're not any of those communities, so we shouldn't just adopt, adopt the same exact sign standards that they have, nor am I recommending that we do such. I think it just puts it into perspective if we can understand and see what other communities have done and maybe how that has been working for that community. The second thing that staff looked at was, you know, safety and what may be the Department of Public Works has said and/or what the Wisconsin Department of Transportation has put up, put out regarding these signs. I did confirm that our Department of Public Works did identify that the seven, the original seven-second static requirement was to minimize distracted driving. And they, they agreed that that was appropriate for EMCs to require that hold time of seven seconds. When looking at the DOT guidelines, however, you'll see that while they might not be appropriate to use as a reference to our signs throughout the community, I think it somewhat sets a baseline and puts things into perspective. They require a minimum display time of two seconds per liner, per phase for speeds of 55 miles an hour. So quite a bit different than the other communities that, that I've referenced earlier. Green Bay, Wausau, who have four, 10, and was it, was it eight second, eight seconds? The DOT is only requiring on a 55 mile an hour highway a hold time of two seconds. So again, it's quite the difference. They also have a comment with regards to 30 mile-per-hour speed limits, indicating that a minimum display time of one second per liner, phase may be used. I think part of the reason you see the DOT make these comments is, is because of the findings in the next research that staff pursued. And that was with the International Sign Association and the Sign Research Foundation. These appear to be two credible resources with regards to all types of signage, but in particular, most recently, electronic message center signage. And I've referenced some of those materials and those publications that they've done in the past. And you'll see some of them up on the screen. They've put together, and they're, while they're separate organizations, they work quite, quite regularly together. And you can see their logos on these different documents. But they've looked at nighttime brightness level, and they've kind of set standards on what those are. And they are recommending that 0.3-foot candles. And I think that's why you've seen the other communities adopt that standard, and that's what I'm recommending in our code as well. As well as the, the measurement equation that's used, dependent upon, again, the ambient light levels surrounding the sign and the size of the sign. They've also done studies on digital signage and traffic safety. And they have not found a correlation between traffic safety and the operation of electronic message centers. Some of the documents, and I won't go into a lot of detail here, you know, show that the average motorist looks at a sign for approximately two seconds, but in a six-second period, they look at their phone 4.6 seconds. So there's quite a difference between, I think, what's distracting drivers and what's not. And again, they, they do not necessarily find a correlation between these EMCs and their use and the, the safety to motorists. So I've, I've summarized some of the, some of the principles that I thought were relevant for the conversation. And again, the highlighted areas, these have all been included within the memo, but I'll touch on the highlighted portions. Basically, they are indicating that, or recommending that municipalities only regulate message brightness, duration, and transition. Furthermore, they have indicated that, you know, based on the appearance of the display, if we regulate that, it may run afoul with the content-based regulations set by the federal government. So we cannot regulate content of a sign. And if we start dictating the appearance of the sign, it could potentially open the door to some of those content-based regulations, which we have to remain neutral on and cannot regulate under the, the federal statute. Number three, they do determine that EMCs have proven to be very cost-effective for advertising. And no square footage area restrictions or minimal restrictions of the allowable square footage are recommended for EMCs. So basically, they're indicating that they do not recommend that the, the square footage of them be regulated, like maximum and minimum requirements. You'll find that I'm recommending that they, they be part of an overall sign, and they not be larger than, I think it was 65% of that sign. But I think that's from an, purely an aesthetic standpoint, that, you know, to have an EMC on a pole by itself, I don't think looks as aesthetically appealing than a larger monument sign with a static logo and, and name of the business with, with, you know, an EMC built into the overall sign. Again, however, that's subject to your interpretation and opinion as well. Moving on, again, they recommend that the nighttime brightness level for EMCs be 0.3-foot candles, which is a measurement of light above ambient conditions. When measured at appropriate distance, and they recommend a certain equation to come up with that distance, which we would adopt, and I'm recommending. I'll also note that we likely would have to get a multi-meter. I don't believe we have one in the office now. So if, if the sign code is adopted, we would likely purchase one so we can regulate the sign code in its entirety. Moving on, the ISA recommends that messages relate to the business, event, goods, profession, or service being conducted, sold, or offered. They don't feel as though we should permit these as billboards to advertise things that are off-premise. And we, we do not do so in the sign code currently. You have to, again, be advertising a profession, an event. So it could be like a civic event you could advertise, or a profession or service or good related to the site. Lastly, again, this is what I've commented already. Basically, they've done two types of studies. One regarding statistical information, and the other regarding human factors when it comes to traffic safety and EMC's impact to motorists. And neither of the type of study has shown that digital signs cause any increase in accidents or hazard to the traveling public. Here are some of the resources that I've cited in coming to these conclusions. And I will note, if, if you are curious on what different hold times look like or what different transitions look like, they do have a website that shows a five-second hold time, a three-second hold time, a 10-second hold time, and a video that shows different transitions going from one screen to the other screen. With that being said, I think that the two major changes that, that I would recommend based on these findings is that we reduce the static display time to a maximum of two seconds. I think that coincides with the DOT regulation. I think it, I think it's fitting. Again, I, I don't have a strong opinion on this, given my research and findings. So whether it's two seconds or one second or nothing, again, I don't think I have a strong opinion on it, given, again, the research that doesn't necessarily show a correlation between traffic impact and things of that nature. The other change that I would recommend is that we require a transition time of one second or less, again, which is also consistent. The ISA requires, recommends that, so that is consistent with their recommendations. And then I would recommend allowing for animated scrolling or traveling transitions. Again, I think if, if you're transitioning from one, one page to the next or one screen to the next, I think, you know, whether it's animated scrolling or traveling, I don't think it negatively affects motorists, nor do I think it, you know, it affects anything else with regards to the sign and its operation. Again, I would recommend then, in summary, that we adopt the code with these recommended changes. And I would be happy to share any of those videos if you do want to see the difference between transitions and hold times. Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle. Does anybody on the Commission have any questions? JR, do you have any questions?
I guess I just want to make sure that I understood something that Kyle presented. Can you hear me all right or not?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Kyle, did I hear your recommendation now does or does not include a two-second minimum?
Right now, the recommendation does include a two-second hold time. But again,
Okay.
From a, from a recommendation or opinion standpoint, again, I think, based on the findings by the ISA and the Sign Research Foundation, I don't have a strong opinion on that recommendation. While I do find it's, it may be valuable, again, based on the findings, it, it may be irrelevant as well and may be more burdensome to businesses who have to abide by that.
Thank you for clarifying that. I guess I would ask that the Planning Commission consider that the other controls that would be in place, that, for instance, that it does be in place, that, for instance, that it doesn't mimic an emergency vehicle flashing, that type of thing, that that be more critical than limiting it to a two-second display. And if I can use this, for instance, depending upon where the sign is located and what the viewing distance is for the passing cars and what the speeds of those cars are, that should be the determining factor of what the change-up in the display is. And that having to have something in the code that says it can't be more frequent than two seconds becomes a bit of a enforcement and management issue as opposed to, no, that does look like an emergency vehicle. So I would ask that, you know, the planning commission consider that modification to the proposed ordinance and that the concern over it mimicking emergency vehicles be, you know, more important as opposed to controlling. And like Kyle said, it's not like he feels like we're going to create an unsafe situation if it's one second versus two seconds or no regulation on that. So that's my first comment. May I make another one on something else that was, I thought I heard Kyle talk about in the proposed ordinance?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. So did I hear you, Kyle, say that the proposed ordinance does have a restriction that the electronic message center can't make up more than 65% of the overall allowable signage on the property?
Yes, it does. If you look in the sign table, which is one of the last pages in the packet, it would be, that would be page 36 of 36, and it is the 11 by 17 handout provided. This was something that existed prior that I did not change and don't necessarily recommend to change. But if, for example, you look at the second column or third column, which is the general commercial B2 district, and you follow it down to the ground sign row, you'll see at the bottom of that box in that column, it indicates for display, up to 65% of permissible sign area may be used for an electronic message center display. And that 65, it appears for ground signs, is replicated in the B5 district, the I1 district, the P1 district, the M1 district, and the M2 district.
So when calculating out the size of a sign that a business can have, depending upon how much frontage they have on the road and the other factors that go into that, are you saying that, I shouldn't say you, is the existing code and the new one that's being proposed, is it saying then that all the signage, including the electronic reader board, has to be less than what that total maximum is? Or is that they still get their business signage and an electronic message center that can't be more than 65% of what that total allowable is?
So I think to answer your question, properties are permitted ground signs based on lineal foot of the longest street frontage. So if, for example,
Right.
That ratio was 100 square feet is permitted for a ground sign, you could have up to 65% of that ground sign be an electronic message center. So with 100 foot being the maximum allowable, or 100 square foot being the maximum allowable ground sign, 65 square feet of that 100-foot sign could be an EMC.
In addition to, or minus from that 100?
As part of the 100. So it would be up to the property owner if they wanted to pursue a static sign, you know, a traditional sign, or if they wanted to incorporate some of the 100 square feet into an EMC, they could do it up to 65 square foot in the example of a 100-square-foot allowance.
Okay. So I would ask that the commission consider an alternative to that, and that being let the total square footage be what it is and not dictate to the business owner, based on their location, which, you know, it has to be. Technology is going to continue to advance, and the technology might already be out there for what I'm about to say, and I'm just not even aware of it. But could you imagine for a moment that the, and using Kyle's example, you know, 100-square-foot sign would be just an electronic reader board, and the business logo and name would be part of that message? It would be part of that message center. As opposed to with us having an ordinance that says it can't be more than 65% of it, that wouldn't be an option. Instead of having two signs up, they would only need to have one sign up because that one electronic message center would serve both purposes. Does that make sense, or do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, JR. This is Ben. Yeah, I think it probably behooves the members here to consider that, especially since, you know, the technology probably does exist. And aesthetically,
Mm-hmm.
You know, going into the future, I'm sure there are signages that, you know, we're thinking about the ones that we just approved last meeting that with Brings, and their sign is aesthetically, you know, what it is, and we're all familiar with that one. But with the technology advancing these days, I'm sure it's not going to look like that when you're considering the logo of something as well as, say, a scrolling message or whatnot. So yeah, I think,
Right.
I appreciate your comments on this and how thorough you have provided the, you know, the group here with stuff. Did you get a chance, this is going back all the way to your first question, but did you get a chance to see page 22 of the memo? I think it was 46.14 with the emergency vehicles. That was one thing that you brought up, and I thought that was at the open hearing as well, that you brought up regarding how it could resemble emergency vehicles. And I know it's somewhat subjective, but
Mm-hmm.
I think the two seconds would definitely eliminate that
Mm-hmm.
as well as that language. But I don't know if you got a chance to see that, that would answer that question for you too. And I think it was important for us to address that before we move forward.
Yep. I did not get a chance to take another look at that, but if we remove the two-second minimum and control it over, and some municipalities have done this as part of the permitting process, that the business owner is signing off that they recognize that they cannot do that. And it can't do flashing, strobe, that type of thing. I don't think we need that two-second minimum. And now that, you know, Kyle has been able to provide information from a safety standpoint that whether it's one second or five seconds, it doesn't have an impact on, a negative impact on the safety. So again, I would ask that the commission consider removing that 65% max ratio of electronic messaging to the overall signage, because it could be the signage, period. And it would just fit within the allowable square feet that they have. And let the business owner, you know, make that determination.
Thank you. Any other commissioners have any questions or comments? Go ahead, Susan.
I don't know if I could provide you one answer, because I think throughout the community, there could be several. I think, for example, most recently, if a business wanted to identify the fireworks downtown, I would permit that. Yeah, the way I would interpret it is if the business is somehow directly involved, for example, if a business is supporting a local church picnic, or they're advertising a certain percentage of the proceeds to the product that they're selling will go to this, you know, event or the humane society, because that connection and that correlation exists, if they're displaying it, I don't think it would become an issue. And honestly, you know, we're not driving around and policing the electronic message centers that exist now in the community. And honestly, it'd probably be on a complaint basis. So if, it would probably come to my attention if somebody were using an EMC for the sole purpose of continuing to advertise for off-premise items or products or just events just to do so, to take advantage of the ability that the sign permits. But again, if the correlation exists between the business and the event, I wouldn't find any issue with that.
Thank you.
Maybe this is, I'm sorry, I shouldn't ask for permission to speak first.
You're fine. Go ahead, JR.
Has the question been asked, why we need that to be, you know, part of the ordinance? Because, you know, clearly, we're advertising properties that are not on our premises. And that's the business that we're in. And I get what Kyle is saying. I mean, that's part, an integral part of our business. Is there a way that somebody buying a piece of land and just putting on an electric message center up on it and advertising something that isn't even on that property, but it's on a couple streets away, is there another way to control it without it being stated the way it currently is in the ordinance?
So the intent of the ordinance is to prohibit off-premise signs, off-premise signs being a billboard-type sign. So with EMCs, because it's not a static display, so when something comes to our office, we review the square footage, the height. We can't necessarily regulate content, but we can require it to have to relate to the business. The federal government does identify that that is being an appropriate mechanism for regulation by municipalities. Same with the, what is it, the, I'm blanking. So we define off-premise sign within our ordinance, and we strictly prohibit them at the beginning of the ordinance. And I think it's important to mention this under the EMC, so it's clear that, I mean, ultimately, an EMC can act as an off-premise sign, dependent upon what's displayed and what, you know, what's advertised, right? If a business started charging other businesses in other parts of town to advertise on this sign, and it was brought to our attention, we would then follow up and cite this section of the code, the EMC section. We'd probably also cite the off-premise sign section. We'd have to cite the definition of an off-premise sign, and obviously, we'd have to have, you know, probably some photographs of what's being advertised. But I think it's beneficial to identify it in the EMC section as well as where it's identified under the definition of off-premise sign to create more clarity in the code.
Kyle, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Correct. That would be considered an off-premise sign. There is no principal use on the property. So if the sole intent is to advertise for uses on other properties and charge for it, yes, that would be considered a billboard or off-premise sign, which is prohibited under this sign code. Now, if you guys have a different opinion of that, and you'd like to permit off-premise signs, we can start that discussion. But I think most municipalities identify that in doing so, you will kind of open a can of worms from an aesthetic standpoint along your commercial corridors, possibly in your residential neighborhoods. And I would tread lightly if you're thinking about permitting billboards or off-premise signs in the community.
And do you have concerns or could see any concerns with eliminating that 65% for the EMCs?
I'm a little mixed on that. I think, again, from an aesthetic standpoint, I think if you don't have a static logo or business name, it becomes more arbitrary as to what the sign is used for. So, for example, if you have a clinic, and you have the name and logo of the clinic, and then below that, you have the EMC, I think it's clear that the sign is advertising for the clinic, and then the EMC is associated to that advertisement and that principal use on the property. Whereas if we remove that, and from an aesthetic standpoint, I think you'll find that you'll have nicer monument-type signs, rather than, again, what would be permitted without this requirement is a pole with an EMC on the top. Aesthetically, it doesn't look the greatest, and it could be more difficult to tie the advertisement of the sign to whatever use exists on the property. And so, you know, that would be my concern initially. If we did not, if we did, if we removed the 65% requirement, I may feel more comfortable in drafting, you know, some other language regarding landscaping or, you know, a specific sign base of a specific size for an EMC, a standalone EMC without any other signage, just to make up for some of that sign aesthetics that potentially could be lost if you don't incorporate it into the overall sign.
Thank you.
May I comment?
Go ahead.
You know, Kyle makes a good point. And it would be, you know, aesthetically, not the greatest to just have a pole and have an EMC on the top of it. And I would say, you know, a good blend of what we're talking about here and still allowing for the advancement of technology and the best use of the space that the business owner has to work within, you could have an EMC inside of a very nice, you know, structure, you know, where it's framed out very nicely, but the signage itself is the EMC, and it may be on a business center that has more than one tenant. And instead of having multiple signs, now you've got a really nice-looking, you know, pedestal with an embedded EMC and a good way of displaying all of the occupants in that business center. that business center.
I like your thoughts on, you know, being prepared for the future, JR. The sad thing is aesthetically, it's all subjective of what we think is going to look appealing to the eye and then what the business owner at the end of the day has money for to erect the sign. And, yeah, I guess I'm starting to think about, you know, that percentage of sign and what it's going to look like long-term in the event that it's not erected and, you know, with the frame out and what it's going to look like long-term when the occupant or business owner doesn't do it, you know, the way that you're somewhat portraying that it could look, and which I also would feel as though it would aesthetically look nice. But I fear it kind of opens up that subjective look of what aesthetically is pleasing on, you know, some of our thoroughfares.
Right. And, but also, the 65% is subjective, right?
Yeah, yeah. And that's open to, yeah, I would agree. It's kind of an arbitrary number right now, and Kyle kind of admitted to that.
Yep. And that's why, that's why I think, I think we should be more concerned with overall square footage of signage, period. And let's, you know, let it operate within that with both the aesthetics and the technology, you know, needed to get the permit.
Is there a chance, Kyle, down the road, that someone could get a, not a variance, but the exemption regarding a signage in that arena? If they had something that they presented technologically advanced and appeared aesthetically pleasing, I think it would be a good precedence to set if it's portraying what JR is portraying.
In terms of being beyond the 65% requirement?
Correct. I mean, I don't want to open up a can of worms where we're constantly reviewing that. And in the event that we would, wouldn't we be able to alter that portion of signage then?
You could.
If twenty years from now, everybody says, we're going to all come out with...
You could. I think we'd still need to see, you know, a unique property characteristic that, I don't think cost could be identified as means for an exception.
Yep.
Like, if somebody came in and said, "Well, I just want to do a pole and an EMC because the EMC is 15 grand, and I don't have the money to do the rest of the monument and the rest of the sign," which would be another 10 grand, cost typically never should be factored into the approval. But if other unique situations that meet the sign exception standards would be in play, I think, yeah, you could grant it. You know, the 65% requirement, again, that was, that's been in there since this was created back in 2019. It hasn't, I guess, been discussed up to this point, partially because I think it's hidden in the large table at the end of the code. But you're right in that it's somewhat an arbitrary number on, you know, the maximum. As you saw with other communities, most of them were 50%, had a 50% maximum requirement. So, you know, 65 would be obviously more than 50%. But again, the aesthetic components are in the eye of the beholder. So, you know, does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does.
Okay.
I guess the aesthetics are, I guess, the subjective opinions of members, and I would hope going forward in the future that everybody just sitting in these chairs are thinking about that type of, you know, arena for our city.
Yeah, and I guess I'm, at this point, I'm personally still comfortable with the 65%. As technology evolves, you know, our ordinances need to evolve, and should somebody come forward with a concept or a proposal of what, you know, a 100% EMC sign could look like and aesthetically pleasing in our community, I'm hoping that the planning commission at that point will take that into consideration and evolve with that.
Yeah, I think the 65 is quite generous, too, with, when you think about it, when you look at a sign, more than half of the sign could be an EMC. I guess maybe just more of a, how it reads, but on page 23, 4615, paren B, number four, it used to say, "There shall be no scrolling." But if we take all that out, the sentence would just read, "There shall be no and transition time." Maybe just reword that how it...
Yes, correct. It would be, "There shall be no flashing transitions, comma, and transition time shall be one second or less."
Okay. I missed that. Saw all the red, but...
Yeah, that could be.
Okay.
Probably should be blue. I apologize for that.
No, that's fine.
I think the other thing, if I may...
Go ahead, Kyle.
Where was that?
I'm sorry, that was, it's, where is that? 4615, paren B?
Four.
Four. It was the flashing transitions. Once that was identified, it was a clear sentence then.
Okay. Number four, is that what you said?
Correct.
So it now is going to read, "There shall be no..." What?
Flashing transitions and transition, transition time shall be one second or less. That's how it currently reads.
Okay. Got it. Thank you for clarifying.
You're welcome. Kyle?
I was just going to comment in regards to that same section, which would be number two, which is shown on the page, which discusses the hold time or the static time of two seconds. You know, whether it's two or one, I think having that hold time helps to ensure that nothing's flashing. While we have the requirement that you can't mimic vehicles and that we have number four that indicates that you can't have flashing transitions, if we don't have a hold time, it could somewhat open the door to flashing and, or what may appear to be flashing if somebody is, you know, scrolling in half a second or quarter of a second, and then we have to, as staff, make the determination as to whether or not that is flashing. So I think there might be a benefit at a minimum to at least have a one-second hold time to ensure that, you know, these aren't flashing, and anything under that one second possibly could be considered flashing if it exists. So again, right now, you'll find that it's two seconds. And again, the primary reason for recommending that was to more so be in line with the DOT. But again, the DOT indicates that with 30 mile-per-hour speed limits, that a minimum one second exists. So again, I would be okay, I think, with reducing that to one if the commission felt comfortable.
Yeah, I think the one would be, you know, talking one second. But I think having that placeholder in there saying, you know, to identify that would be helpful for you guys to have it be a hold one, so you're not trying to identify, was that a transition or was that a hold, or what was that one second I just saw? So I would be okay with the one second.
Ben, did you have something?
No, I'm fine with the one second, too, as long as it doesn't create ambiguity for you guys in enforcement. If you don't see the problem with one second and the use of our language, I think, in 46.14 mimicking emergency vehicles, if there's no ambiguity in enforcing it for you guys and it's not going to be a hardship, I don't think there's, I guess, subjectively viewing emergency vehicles versus that one second, it should be pretty clear.
I agree. Any bells? Have any questions, comments, concerns?
No, after we approve this, it still goes to council, right?
Correct.
I'm just still thinking on that one-second static time. To me, one second is too quick. It's going to look like it's just a flashing sign. So are you going to be able to make the determination between the static of one second and the transition to the next? Or is it just going to be flash, bam, 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 all the way through, you know?
I think we'd have to separate it. So the transition, and I can play the video, there are many transitions. You can go up slowly, you can, you know, kind of like, I don't know, they've got a bunch of different names for them, and I think after the transition, and if it's instantaneous, that's when the one-second period would start, after the transition. Some transitions, if you're sliding, right, it wouldn't start until the full transition has occurred, then the one-second would start, and then another transition, which could be up to one second, the transition could be faster. You could have a, you know, quarter-section transition where it's a quick fade-in, fade-out, but once that's, the transition's finished, that would start the one second. So it's, this is hard to respond because, you know, we haven't necessarily been in the field at this point enforcing it. But I think if we can separate the transition from the hold time, I think it would be doable. Certainly, though, a two-second hold time would be a little bit easier.
It would be noticeable.
Yeah.
Yeah. Versus a one second, that, to me, a transition in the signage, one second transition and one second for that static sign, to me, it's just going to be like your lights off, on, off, on kind of movement. I just like that, you know, we should be able to distinguish between the static and the transition time.
Sure.
Because you're not going to take two seconds to do a transition, you know, on a typical sign like that. You're going to do a quick switch over, which, how quick is it? You know, it's going to be, to me, one second, it's just being like, you know, turning off the lights. So to me, I would keep the two seconds just to make it easier for you guys when you have to go out to the field and look at it.
Yeah. In response, another comment I want to make in the ISA, in one of their presentations, I think it's their Finding Ground presentation, which is a very good presentation, I think they identify on average, a business uses two screens to deliver a message. Just given the size of EMCs and I think maybe their cost, you know, they're not billboard size, but in order to get a message across, typically, on average, they'll use two screens, which means one transition in between, and it would be a two-second hold time if we went to one, versus a minimum two-second hold time, which would be four seconds for a message, which arguably, at 35 miles an hour or 25 miles an hour, you know, you could be past it. But just want to make that note that, again, on average, to get a message across, it's typically two slides. Now, not every message from a business owner's standpoint, especially if they're advertising a product and, you know, they just have, show the product and the price. But if they say, you know, "Sale today on shoes," you know, that might take two slides to get the size of font that's appropriate, given the distance and the setback for the sign. Just a thought.
I think it's a good discussion. I think the two-second concern is, I think it's credible. There's a lot to stand on, on not wanting to create that flash. I guess I'm, at this point, two seconds and one second, I'm going to defer to Kyle in that arena and ask him what the recommendation is from his unit going forward, two or one second. I can see both arguments. I don't want it to create a burden for his office to try to enforce and the ambiguity, like I had said, with enforcement. I also don't want to restrict the business or property owner from getting across the message, but I also see the concern of, you know, mimicking that flashing. I'll admit, somewhat annoying sometimes when it is so fast. So I guess I'll defer to you in this, Kyle, for, I guess, your opinion. You've kind of given it both ways as well.
Yeah.
And I know you're to remain neutral in, you know, supporting us in our decision, but I guess in your position, what would you recommend for...
Obviously, I recommend two seconds in the memo and in the presented ordinance. Honestly, I don't have a strong opinion. I think there's value in having a hold time at a minimum of one second, again, to distinguish between flashing and not, and providing a little more clarity in that regard specifically related to EMC signs. You know, I think, I think, you know, the two-second would probably be more detrimental to a business who is displaying a multi-slide message, whether it's two slides or three slides. Again, on average, is the two. You know, it's tough because a lot of the research that you see here, there's several factors that play into the effectiveness of a sign. The speed limit, the setback, the font, the brightness, the color, ambient light, day/night conditions, rain, I mean, there's a number of factors. And I don't think that this commission nor any municipality can adopt the perfect sign regulations. However, you know, the ISA, the Research Institute, the DOT, they've come up with these recommendations because they think they're somewhat common ground, right? They're more appropriate, and I will say, the ISA's stance on hold times is to not do four, five, six, 10 seconds like we've seen in those first examples, because that is very detrimental to the business. I recognize that when I first looked at the code and recommended from seven to five, and now I'm recommending from five to two, because I do recognize that, but I also didn't know on average that to display a message, you need two slides. So in Green Bay, if they're holding at 10 seconds on two slides, they now need to get 20 seconds of motorists viewing that, or 20 seconds before they can go on to the next message, essentially. So it's very detrimental to the business. So at the end of the day, I'm probably not going to provide you a clear answer, but I do believe that a minimum of at least one second, you know, is appropriate.
May I speak?
Yeah.
Yes, go ahead.
I would ask again that if there is going to be a hold on it, that it be the one second so that it can be determined, you know, one second is not flashing. And the one second allows, I can tell you, as hard as we try to get a message out in one slide, it really can't be done, not without making it so small that you can't read it. And from a safety standpoint, we don't want people, you know, craning their necks to wait for the rest of the message because they're going by it. And that would be why I would ask that the planning commission, if they are going to put a time limit on it, that they make it the one second.
I personally am indifferent also. I, my biggest concern, I agree with Lee, is making sure that it's not a flash. And if one second does not look like a flash, I'm okay with that. But yeah, I agree, I don't want a flash. So are you going to give us an example, Kyle?
They do not have a one-second example. It doesn't look like. But yeah, if this would help with regards to, you know, making emotion or your comfort level, I can play the three-second hold time example here. Let's see if this goes.
There is no one second, though. Three's the slowest.
Yep. And I apologize, JR, if you're not able to see these here.
He should be. I think he is watching online.
I am, but there's a lag.
So the three might actually look like five.
It's the seconds and the lag.
I'll probably see it after you guys vote.
So I'll also play the animated transition. So this is an example of what different transitions look like. So this is an example of what different transitions look like. I think they're described on the right side of the screen. Maybe not.
All I'm seeing is all of you guys looking at something.
Yeah, let me try it again.
So would that?
And yell.
Would that display there be like, that wouldn't really be, those aren't, are those all transitions with each word coming in? You know, those, that seems more like a video.
Almost like you don't have a statement or a static message then? I mean, that's to Lee's point, that's where it starts getting.
Yep, yep.
Overwhelming then.
Right.
Where to start and stop.
So it would be, yeah, it would, it would be the, I mean, essentially the end of the message. So somebody could have an added animated transition, and they could have it be four seconds if they wanted, but right, these are, you know, keep in mind, these are minimums. So I think if, for example, the A, B, C one, you know, I, I would probably consider that to be one message. They're just kind of focusing on different areas of, of that, you know, that message, right? So they show the background and then they showed, I think, the different checks along the way. I would consider that message. And if that's a four-second message, that's fine. They can be longer, they just, the minimum would be either one or two seconds, the way the code's provided.
Was that still present? Was that the E?
I would.
Was that at that point? That's where you want it to start?
I would consider, when you see the background there and you see the A, once you see the background, that's the start of the message. The A, the B, the C, because the background doesn't necessarily change, I guess it's the foreground that changes. So I mean, that's the, the message, right? And so that's what I would consider to have to meet the, the one-second hold time requirement. And I think that message was, you know, probably two or three or maybe four seconds. And then they would, right, advertise, I guess, another product or, you know, scroll text or whatever it is, and then that would start then the next message.
Yeah, I guess you could, you could argue that part of that message was transitioning or was not stagnant for the one second or transitioning for the, because everything, it almost flashed, each thing almost flashed up, but, hey, you're going to go down on it.
And that gets back to.
Right.
Right. And that's the difference between animated messages versus, I guess, what would be static messages. So I, I have removed, because I, I think there's value in those for a business, and I've permitted the animated message, but again, the way I would interpret that is, that's the message until they start advertising or the product changes, that would start then the new time for transition and/or message minimum requirement.
I think you're also kind of covered in there because you cannot have flashing. So if, so if it's one and one, I think you're still covered because then, if it looks to be flashing, then it's flashing, which you can't have.
Right.
I don't know, it's, but then it says at number four, "There shall be no flashing transition and transition time shall be one second or less." So I guess if you're one and one, and it looks like a flash, technically it'd be violating, well, it might be a contradiction in the ordinance then, one and one and then.
Yeah, so I, honestly, I, I think the biggest, biggest enforcement issue that we may have with these is probably going to be brightness at night and whether or not that distracts motorists. I don't necessarily think the, the hold times, the transition are going to be most problematic, and that's based on the research that I've found in the communities that I've researched. It's, it's the brightness that's the biggest issue with EMCs. And it's pretty clear, given the equation and, you know, given the regulation of 0.3 foot candles above ambient light levels at whatever distance the equation indicates. So I, you know, I think that is well addressed. I think the, the hold times, the transitions, I think, for the most part, they'll, they'll probably be okay. I think we, we tend to think when we adopt ordinances, what's the furthest scenario? What's the worst outcome that could, could occur here without recognizing that I think most of them are, are probably going to follow the rules, most of them are going to comply with the ordinance, and it'll probably be rare instances where they don't, especially because we're not looking at 10-second hold times and other heavy requirements that other communities have done in the past.
It's probably important to note too, that the intent of the business owner is to display a message that can be received by people on the street or on the road, and they're probably not going to want to create something so annoying that.
Yes.
The message isn't delivered just out of spite of the.
You could somewhat argue that they're, that, that the displays of these are self-regulated because of the mile-per-hour, the speed limit, because of the setback, the font sizes, things of that nature, that yeah, I mean, for the most part, a business owner is not going to want to display a message that's not going to have the best impact to the community because I, I will say, these EMCs are also very expensive. JR can probably comment to that. And yeah, if they're not producing the best message to the most amount of people, then they're not doing their job. So yeah, an important note to make. There are other videos on here if, if anyone else wants to see anything else. This is one of instantaneous transitions where it's just very clear-cut, slide, 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 and then there's different transition effects here. This is the one that discusses the different hold times between messages.
May I, may I comment?
Go ahead, JR.
I just wanted to thank the planning commission for allowing my input. I am going to have to step off the call. I'm hosting a, a company-wide event tonight, and if the boss doesn't show up, it's probably not going to look good. So I had mentioned to Kyle that I was going to need to try to be off the call by five, so I apologize. I trust that with the information and the amount of time that you guys have spent on this, that what finally is, is voted on and proposed to the council will, you know, take into consideration the business aspect of it, and I feel like Kyle has done a good job with that.
Thank you, JR.
So thank you again, everyone. I'm going to have to step off the call.
Okay, thank you. Have a good night.
Okay, bye now.
Okay, Kyle, I want to finish your thought.
Oh, I.
Okay.
That was, that was it, unless you guys have additional questions or wanted to see any of those additional videos.
Yeah, we spent a lot of time talking transition and, oh, Susan.
I would guess, Kyle, what's your comment with regard to changing the ordinance? I would think that if we went with your original recommendation of two seconds, that it would be much easier to change it from one in the future if it were to change it to two. For that reason, I would think that we could best do that.
Yeah, I, I think I would agree with that. As I note at the end of the memo, or I previously noted, anytime you repeal an ordinance and adopt a new ordinance, just like the zoning code we did in 2018, typically six months go by and you recognize, oh, we missed this, or there was an error here, or let's adjust this, because as we start implementing the ordinance, we recognize imperfections or errors. And so I would, I would think that because this is a substantial ordinance that we're regulating daily and several permits we're issuing weekly, that we would probably in a few months have a handful of things that we would bring back and amend, and perhaps one of them could be looking at the transition. I could come back with examples to see, you know, if, if there have been any EMCs issued and if they're meeting the guidelines and, and give you some kind of in, in-person, real-life experiences with regards to these signs. But yes, generally, I would agree, it's easier to go one direction than the other.
I'll agree with Susan's argument here. I think to create a more restrictive code in the future from going from one to two is going to be much harder than, than creating the two and realizing that indeed we could have gone down to a one later.
What are your wishes?
Well, I agree with all that. So I guess as it's presented, we're not making any changes. The only changes would be like the two or the 65%, but I guess I would make a motion to accept Plan 19-0938 to replace Chapter 46, the sign code as presented in the packet.
I'll second.
So we have a motion in a second.
Who's the second? I'm sorry.
Ben.
Okay.
Motion in a second to adopt the sign ordinance as it's presented tonight. Any further discussion? Three seconds? Okay, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And anybody opposed? Motion carries. So we are at our last item, I believe, which is.
To adjourn?
Yes, we have a, we have a motion, is there, I'll second it. Oh, beat you. To adjourn, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, everybody.